There was a woman and she was upset.
Oh, well, maybe it just happened. Cause it was clear. It was clear. I don't know how they got in there.
I have to go home.
Richard has both bases.
You got what?
Hess.
Beer. Oh. You don't think he can handle that?
He can't.
No, he can't.
Would you leadership a word of prayer please?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the moisture we've received. Thank you for keeping all of our citizens and all of our people safe as they travel this day. And we pray that everyone will have a productive day and that you will help us and guide us to have good decisions. And we pray for all those who have no one to pray for them this day. We pray for all of the people who have no place to live or are in dire need. And we're so thankful for all the blessings you've given us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Shouldn't be dog up for you leadership.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Media Act.
Okay.
Do you want to call the meeting?
We will.
Roll call. We have Lamb.
Mm-hmm.
Or I guess Jones.
Here.
Robander.
Aye.
Lamb. And acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Media Act.
Move to approve minutes. So go first.
Cindy, you want to?
Second.
Yeah. Okay, considering possible action on the minutes for April twenty-two, twenty nineteen, and April twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Special meeting.
I move to approve the April twenty-second, twenty nineteen meeting.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbin.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the April twenty-second, twenty nineteen regular meeting. Entertaining motion to approve the April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen special meeting.
I will move that we second the April twenty-ninth meeting.
Okay, I will second that. Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbin.
Abstain.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Comments from the public on the blow agenda items? Seems there's no comments. We'll move down to item seven A, monthly appropriations. I'm gonna send this one.
Okay.
So chat with him.
Sure. Let's see, and then when we get these done, they get passed on to the exercise board. And these are our appropriations. I forgot. This is probably the first time you've done these. And so as the money comes in and it goes into the treasurer's office, and then once all that money's in there, once a month, you have to take that money and disperse it to where the accounts are. So on this particular one, we're taking just this five hundred four one for reimbursements to on that one.
Gotcha.
And so it's gonna be broke down and give it the ninety dollars and thirty-six inch part-time, thirteen into twenty travel, and M and O four hundred thirty forty. So we just make sure it balances out. Some people have our nine-one-one too, that we collect from all the different phone companies. So like this one, it usually tells you this one is four nine two fifty. And I don't know, that would have been the phone which.
Hello, would you have someone bring over the other phone over?
This is.
Okay. We're not ready for him yet. Okay, right.
So each one, each phone kind of there being, so you'll there be a whole bunch of them. This is the Pioneer. So Pioneer's showing you what their phones are. This one, the. They should say who that phone and it doesn't. Okay, here it is. Oh, for the tax. Southwestern Bell. So each one of them. And then that money, we have partnered in Hibs come.
Right.
And so we send that money back that we put in all of our M and Os. How are you?
Good. You got a haircut.
Okay, I did. I had Crystal whack it completely off.
It's your summer view, huh?
Yeah. Rented the extra pair.
Yes.
That's the money.
And then part of it is to call the.
Is this like the.
Yes, all of all of these are being passed on to to now.
It takes me a little bit because my hair's so fine. Me too. I hardly, I used the same hair dryer for thirty years.
And the every office collects a little bit of fees and then it's dispersed out.
And half of it's just.
The accessories getting, you know, copying and selling those flat books. She gets some for copies and preservation rooms and they all get different money so that they can disperse it out into those accounts. It takes a while to learn all those different accounts. There's so many.
That works. Oh, absolutely.
Might cost more to process that one.
Yeah.
So she's taken her money and fees from this month and she's gonna put it in her part-time operational services. These would be the shares and they would just divided it up into different accounts to use it. We have several of them. And this is how the. They can always find that stuff. They've got a list of stuff they can order and they'll see that or whatever. And he gives a percentage of the profits off that sold in. So this is his profit that he made on the month and then have to do it into different accounts. And then we have a new sales check that goes to emergency services. So one twelve goes to the sheriff and then one twelve to the ambulance and then the. Yeah. Emergency, yeah. So then that'd be his one twelve from there.
Well, this real fund would be collected from.
Be a total.
For.
Yes, and so his one twelve would be that. That would be correct. And this is a special fund for us and it can only be used for. This is, no, this is C B R I, not C I R B. This is the county bridge and road improvements. And it goes into a special fund that we can ask, well, we do have our money. But it's a special fund and we don't use it for certain things. It's not our cash highway funds that we use for day-to-day operations. So I'll show you.
You have a specific.
Yes, it's using bridges or you can do overlays or chip and seals. Can we do chip and seals?
Yeah.
Yeah, chip and seals, but it has to be a specific project that we do and we can use that money for. And that's a pretty good amount of money. We usually do about ten thousand, maybe ten to twelve thousand. That wasn't too bad. That's a pretty good amount.
What about like corporates and things like?
No. Well.
If it's a specific thing. And I only say this because of just what happened here.
I don't think we can do corporates out of that thing. We've never done that. That'll come out of your M and O. I'll show you when you get your money.
Well, I was bringing that up just simply what this water's caused here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Usually our C I R B, we let build and on our five-year plan, we have projects on that five-year plan and that's what funds them projects.
Right, so yeah, we can't just.
Well, we did with the city. We had special tax accounts that can only be used on our streets and things like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we can get into that if. A bit of new stuff that we could possibly tap that and get reimbursed.
Right.
Put it back in.
Put it back in.
Okay, gotcha.
And this is the tax money. And the reason it's different, it's not all the same, is because they get to keep their interest.
Right.
And so that's why it's not equal. Yeah, so the interest. And plus if they had some special investment.
CDs, things like that.
Yeah, right.
Or you can have some CDs.
Right, exactly.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then the fairground has a quarter cent and they just dip that full quarter cent in that.
Yeah.
Cindy, help me with that correction.
That's it.
It's forty-two cents, not forty-one.
So I'll put it down.
Yeah.
I got a penny. I was gonna say, Penny's the hardest to find. I'm right here.
Yeah, she's right here.
Steve started off right because I noticed on his appropriations, District one was.
That's right.
Twenty-nine cent, twenty-seven cent, and then District two was twenty-six. District three, twenty-nine. It's my turn.
Are she special?
Well, it's gonna go to commission.
Special fund.
I don't go to the judges.
When is an orphan, so we call it?
An orphan's fund.
I'm from like the Manchester, Waukegan area.
Okay.
But he used to sing that song every time he'd come in.
And this is our highway funds. And so we have to send them like every month. And you sent in and said, you know, how you have it? We got ninety thousand. So you had to say, you know, some of the water. Wages, M and O, and we open up capital out there, travel, insurance, some different things. So kind of.
This is what I had done last.
I remember. Yeah, so your M and O, this account is where you're gonna take for your two. We used to have an M and O and we used to have two different accounts. We used to have three and five. And we've rolled that all together because now we're trying to get our accounts to match up with the state. So we don't all have different numbers going audit. It's easier to. And so we just started that like two years ago.
You know, like my question, when will this be appropriated?
Today.
Today.
Yeah, it has to have the. You have more than that in your account.
Yeah, not much. That's why I said next year I may want to appropriate.
Okay, and like today, I was short in my account, so I'm moving some money around today and you can do that. And that money, the day you do, we get it put in that way because it's always in our highway. Because it's not like taken from highway, but it's in general. So we can do what in our subaccounts.
Well, we did like I had a blanket for those. You had a blanket for the tractor. Short and then you pulled one of those blankets in.
See, that's the same thing that's called me in my.
But you know, especially with all this stuff, this water's destroyed, it's gonna be really.
We need a motion for.
I make a motion to approve monthly appropriations as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbin.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried. There are no transfers.
There should be a transfer.
Should there?
We have one.
I'm moving. Oh, I bet. I probably.
Yeah.
Can I have someone come in and go down?
Yes, yeah. Um, Paul should see that.
Now, it was, oh, I guess it's coming out of D two.
Well, we needed money in M and O. We were short because of our fuel blankets and stuff. And I can't remember what it was. Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
Us as well, we had to take off a blanket on another deal and put it in the M and O.
Yes.
Aye, can someone come in while I do a transfer or work. Pardon me.
Monthly mortgage tax certificate fee. Eighty dollars.
Oh, okay. Um, I move that we accept the monthly mortgage tax certificate fee at eighty dollars.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Hess. Stinson.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the appropriations from the exercise board.
Second.
Robander, we should second the.
Aye.
Robander. Lamb. Okay, I'm gonna go to transfer. Sorry, I forgot to do the transfer. So they are.
Where's C?
C.
And here's my file right here.
There you go.
And we voted on C.
Yes.
Item D, allocation of alcohol beverage tax, eleven thousand seven sixty-three point nine four.
I make a motion to approve the allocation of alcohol beverage tax, seven thousand seven hundred sixty-three ninety-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbin. Aye.
Aye.
That's a good number.
Pretty good.
Been drinking.
I guess so.
Good luck.
Hey, that is. We're celebrating.
Spring is here.
People like that six point.
Yeah. Seven point.
Like all these days. Spring is here.
Little bunker gets thirty-two seventy-five.
Okay, item E is payroll. Pass the couple over and.
Okay, these are payroll. So we, these are the actual form sheets. So we go through and look at all of them. And make sure we've turned them. Got any questions or anything? Max has something he has to sign.
Getting closer.
They're done. Gets closer. Competition. Yeah, your motion to approve the allocation of alcohol beverage.
Second.
Jen.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
How come I didn't see this coming? That orange.
I got one just for you.
You saw it coming already. Did you do the mortgage tax?
I think it's still coming, isn't it, the fifty-five?
No, with eighty dollars.
We did eighty.
We got.
We didn't work.
Okay.
I don't have the eighty dollars.
We didn't.
Oh, that's his, his.
Make a motion. The eighty dollars.
You know, he didn't have a timesheet.
Okay.
Yeah, right, need to, very good, yeah.
Second.
How come we have two mortgages? And allocation.
Alcohol is different than the mortgage.
No, but it's got two mortgage tax or.
Two fees.
Cause you didn't do one last.
One's for eighty.
Yeah, one's for the month before.
Oh, month before.
Did one of us need to sign that soon?
Maxwell.
That's what you talked about.
Yeah, Maxwell. Usually the sheriff signs those.
Yeah, on the mortgage house.
Let's think about that one good last month this month.
Yeah. Little has this month.
Yeah.
They balance it.
Got it.
They balance.
That's already.
It's a scanner. Calculating.
We, I went to Chapparrell up there and they had an advanced computer class. And if your grade point average was above a B or better, you could get into this class. And we would go up to Hutchison, to the junior college, and it was teaching us computer languages. Fortran, COBOL, that's what we learned. That's back when you had key punch. You had to program it. But we went up there and there was a girl, she was a senior, and she got in there and she put her program in there and it threw the computer into a loop. And it printed out twelve and a half feet of error statement. Before we got shut off. It was something else, but we never let her live that down, you know.
I see what he wants. I'm leaving his court because.
He wants it at.
Yeah. I knew I could. I'm kinda waiting to see what. What. No, no, I've got to. He was placed into some other type of insurance and things for his family and it's. And if he goes a three hundred dollars, he's gonna be kicked off of that.
Got you.
You know, it's a rock and a hard place. It really is. But I need to get him on that and make sure.
Yeah, we're just waiting on that one last thing. Okay, let's do that so we can get them moved on. I make a motion to approve the transfer appropriations.
The actual law will sign it now here.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. That happens. That's the worst thing you do all day. You'll be all right.
The day is young. Oh, yeah, so we need to vote Hess.
Yes, we need to vote. You made a motion.
I did.
And seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbin. Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And this is moving twenty-five hundred on a capital, twenty-five hundred capital up to a M and O because the M won't get the same thing that you go ahead and do. And they're moving today. Fifty-five dollars for the.
Okay, that's.
Has approved the, is that?
Mortgage.
Is that April or is it?
That would have been the other part. So is that?
Yeah, mortgage tax, this from.
March.
March. Move to approve the March mortgage tax certification fee.
You have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Robander and seconded by Jones to approve the mortgage certification tax for fifty-five dollars. All in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Robander, Lamb.
Aye.
We have alcoholic beverage tax.
Have you seen one, two, there's a courthouse. Have you seen one, two, three?
Yep.
This is sheriff. Have you seen the courthouse?
Been moved by Robander.
I've done all those.
Four oh three sixty-one. All in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Robander.
Aye.
Lamb. Motion carries.
This place is.
It's missing a sheet, right?
Why are you getting a lot of chance? Really good, like that, really?
Yeah, it's really good, do you want me to get you a belt?
Oh, sure. I got some stuff I can do. Get me a whole box.
Need to initial all these?
No, just the, just the top sheet, yeah. I just put all that with it, just to. Let me get this, let me look and see what happened to all right there.
Not these either, just the top ones of every.
The top one like that.
Yeah.
You can take those out if you want, I'm just putting them in there just to keep them.
Good mark and roll.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta let him be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have you seen shares?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And then those were payroll sheets, now we're gonna have to assign the payroll reports. And it shows each person what they get. And I guess we all need to hold these. Then the officer has to sign. And for, that's all correct, and then we sign. The papers are numbered, but we try to keep them in order. And then the court house, I know that we can see all the officers.
Uh-huh, yeah, it's okay.
And, you know, obviously that's treasures, and we need another budget, and this is under many courts. And we got, um, this is, um, recording.
Make a motion.
Units paid out, recorded.
Transfer appropriations, approve them.
Okay.
Been moved by Jones and seconded by Braubander to approve the transfer appropriations as presented, all in favor of Jones?
Aye.
Braubander, Lamb?
Aye.
There's no business under the equalization bill, or any new business? I have none.
Bobby need to approve the minutes of the last equalization.
Oh, you know, we do need to do that. Did we not do that the last time?
Well, that was at, uh.
Well, I will have to put it on the next month's agenda, cause we, I didn't post it on the agenda, so. But thank you for. I'll go back and.
Cause that was that exemption that, for the.
Oh, yeah.
Three year.
The five year exemption thing, you're on the third year.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, you're right.
You gotta prove it every year for five years.
Oh, well, let's see, the minutes.
Guess we had to do that every. In the thirty years.
That's all right. You're busy.
The project.
Yeah.
Well, maybe I can get it in these minutes.
Yeah, I'll keep them in order.
So.
So is it okay?
It's already.
Well, we approved, uh.
Yeah.
Three projects last.
Yeah, that's what he's referring to, so they're approved.
Yeah.
They're just intertwined with.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, yeah. Because, yeah, we should be okay.
Okay.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Seconded that.
Yeah.
Nine thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Okay. Steph and all in favor, we have Jones?
Aye.
Braubander, Lamb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
In future.
See you next time.
You bet, you guys.
Yeah.
See ya. She prepares me before the meetings in the classroom, and then she just got it all. And then for the tomorrow, so that's how they want it, one of them, and then they get paid more than we just.
Okay.
And they're open up like this box to, you know, matching costs that we're paying. You know, if they're matched, so we know what we pay and what they pay, so.
Okay.
Got the different things that we pay on. Then we have one that's benefits, all their benefits is paid out of, like, their health insurance. That's paid out of, stuff we got, we got a special cap just for all the debt that we pay for the courthouse and the jail now, we pay on in our districts.
Gotcha.
So these are all the people that we're paying on, like their health insurance or insurance. But you know, it's like, you know, Jen, Kieran, you know, who just last, that's because she's on her husband's health insurance. And we don't pay her.
Right.
So, this would have been, this is April, yeah, so you did.
It started May.
July first, right, so you should be on.
Which I'm having, I'm having a hard time, cause I gotta go online.
Did I?
And I have, the website wasn't working worth a squat. I did, I messed with it for three hours on. One, two, three, row, but.
My health insurance one? Just holler to Alex and she.
Well, she did tell me that she would help me out, but their website, I gotta go in and make an account and sign up on. It would, I'd get to a point and it would just.
Lock up.
Wouldn't go any farther. I probably got like ten accounts because I kept doing it over and over.
You sound like me. If at first it doesn't work, just keep trying, I don't care if it's 20 times.
Isn't that the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing I was expecting and.
A different result.
Different result, yeah, I would, that would definitely explain it. On my part, anyway.
Mine too, right. Tells you, well, I could tell you what they're paying for each one, and that includes overtime.
Yeah.
And so we've pro right in yours.
Mm-hmm.
Based on that.
Yes, they did, they did.
The, we've pro that right there, okay, so that would be yours.
There you go.
All right. Say I can give you that. Those up there, and then we'll have some more to go with it. See, where's page twenty? Is that page?
About here, yep.
Okay, got it. Um, now, I wonder why. I wonder why page twenty-one after page, page twenty is.
There's nineteen and twenty.
There's nineteen, but page twenty is ours. But page twenty-one is your D three stuff, I wonder why that. Or, yeah, his D three stuff, I wonder why that follow that instead of being behind.
His payroll?
Payroll.
I don't know.
Maybe it's cause they're just.
I don't know, but I guess.
It's starting, maybe.
I don't know, it's just, oh, usually it follows behind.
Yes, it does.
It usually follows behind the D three payroll. I'm not gonna mess it up.
Well, I was gonna look, because it said I only had nine thousand dollars left in my account. After payroll. And I've been having more than that, you know.
You want her to print it out of? Well, yeah, Desi, bring us in.
Desi needs to bring us her sheet.
Yeah, because it shows that the D three, it only like forty-eight thousand.
I don't know where I kept the last one in here.
Um, Max and the board, they were kinda wanting to look at their account summary. Okay, thank you, bye-bye. Well, I'm making, you got their appropriation, or I guess, I don't have their appropriations yet before, pardon me.
Okay.
But the payrolls are in here.
Okay.
Okay, you did take the payroll out? Uh-huh. Yep. Okay, so, yeah, so yours should say your payroll, you should have, where's your unaccompanied? Yeah, that should be a hundred and seven, and it's showing fifty, fifty. Or eight? Yeah, forty-eight.
You talking about D three?
I think this, I don't think that should say D three, I think that should say commissioners up there. D one. D two. Yeah, cause here's D three. See, there's D three, right there. Yeah, cause you have a hundred and seven thousand one twenty-nine, yeah, seventy-six. This, I wonder if that matters, if that says D three up there, that should say commissioner. We can sort of tack on it. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put a sticky note on that for her.
Cause it shows this on page.
And make sure that doesn't, that should say, that should be commissioners. Right. Okay. All right. See, I better not get these out of order, page twenty, this will be twenty-one. Yes, you can, you can flip them up, and you can have them up there in order if you have them up, if you want to.
Yeah, I got them all in order.
Okay, you got, don't get you confused, you know what you're doing, don't get you confused.
That's easy today now.
There's a lot more, Max says, this total wages this month with thirty-three forty, it is that any pay this week is benefits form.
Hmm.
So, you can see that I, which we do provide.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we never did have a motion on B, transfer and appropriations, did we?
Yes, yes, we did. Cindy moved and Steve seconded.
Okay, that's the one I didn't get wrote down, thank you.
And I changed it to have the.
Here.
Mm-hmm. And be opened in open meeting. Or it be delivered here, and then to be here, but you have open meeting.
Good. He give you a list of the new people to send it to?
No, he hasn't given me any. He called, and I, I said, is I'll work up the big notice, and open that.
Okay.
That I can call him and tell him.
But, but he'll, but we'll go ahead and approve this and then.
And then I'll get a whole.
Yeah.
Desi said she had payroll out of this, right?
Yep, that's what she said.
Just that mine says before.
See, I, I knew it too.
But now his was right, on his, his was right, and mine isn't.
Well, mine isn't either. If you look back at mine, mine said nine thousand something. And I looked at my sheet here.
And yours says a hundred and seven thousand, oh, wait, is that, wait, 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 no, that's, that's, yours says on, see, yours is right. And then, but Max's said.
Look at mine, see what mine said.
That's, it's either like the last couple of years, yeah. There goes. Here, this one, yeah. Yeah, nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six thirty-five, it's fifty-seven.
See, and that's total unencumbered.
Sixty-six thirty-five, no, that's right, yours is, Desi, mine doesn't, mine doesn't work, because mine says in my account before was sixty-nine and after sixteen, and you show mine as the before, now theirs are after. Okay. Balance, but mine doesn't balance with what this says. That's because I gave you the wrong one. I gotta pull yours at nine twenty-one. Okay. I'll be right back. Okay, that'll be fine, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to have him lay in there. That's on, I just wanna make sure. Yeah, for sure. But I thought it. Okay, so this goes. Okay.
Well, I've sent mine back, I, I ain't got enough money.
Well, I sure didn't put enough money in for next payroll, I'll have to.
I know.
I'll have to transfer before we do payroll, we don't make payroll.
Well, she hasn't got her new appropriations in here yet.
This is your, oh, she doesn't.
No, she said she had.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Well, you had.
Okay, so then I will have.
That's away with me all day.
Yeah, okay.
So I think I'll be all right, Cindy.
I guess I want to make sure that the dates are. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
I gotta remove it in my head if I'm, after you advertise and all that stuff. And then we need to sign this one, and this one is reader benefits.
Well, yeah, cause Wednesday would be the fifteenth, so this Friday would be the seventeenth, that would be right.
Yeah, and then you can, and.
And then Monday.
They're advertising here and here, so, do, from there, do we have to go to two weeks, or do we advertise it here and here and they have to there?
Well, that's the way this reads.
I know, and that's what, I thought, well, that's why we're telling them illegally.
I know, and that's what I thought, well, that's why I'm telling you legally.
So, this one, I mean, this is the treasury transfer money that she gets. And she pays for being able to...
Yeah. Okay.
Her recorder, that she pays for. Come on, we can implement it.
Yes.
And please... Okay, thank you. Tag team, but I'll take these back over.
Okay.
Back the date thing up here.
Okay.
Think you guys should do this when you meet each other, tag team.
Oh, okay.
Don't you think so?
Like a life five? Did her...
Yeah, I think that works.
Like a life five. No, you should, since we're talking about like...
Is that gonna work?
Yeah, I think that's right. Okay, that's what I don't want.
Thank you. Payroll, yep. We need a, need a motion to approve payroll. Ah, I will move that we approve payroll.
I will second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Motion carried, approve payroll.
This is, this is your primary cash money you spend it for, you know, obviously salary, you have to each account. Or you're, you know, that's the...
Cindy's going to retype that next one. The notice to bear, cause the dates, we think the dates are wrong.
Sure.
Can you do that at any time?
Yes, they say your paper on the...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you can do that every Monday, anytime you need, you can do that. And that'll be approved and you'll get the money then.
Okay.
On the back here is that special money.
Desi, can you rework mine?
I need you to rework mine.
I'm just making up to do an overlay on the road. And Max is, he's gonna use his money, cause it's gonna cost him on his payroll.
Mm-hmm.
He's getting so much SGP and server money.
I've gotta save that because my Grady there, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so you got...
I've got that because it's not gonna be done until twenty-six.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna have to do some...
Something to keep that going.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Max.
No, that's, that's okay. You need, he needs to understand. You know, I mean, it's... Well, no, I mean, it's a learning...
Absolutely, and I appreciate you guys offering that tonight. I'm, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
You have to learn quicker than you think, but I'm still learning stuff.
I am too.
I'm still blowing away of all the stuff that went. I was getting calls all night long on this road and I even had to give the, the guy that had bringing thoseer out from Stanley's, and I even had to give him directions. He's calling me at five in the morning. Now, I've got this address, so that's not what I was given. So, I called the dispatcher and said, you better make sure we're on the same page with this guy here. And which, it was too early for that driver, so...
Uh, gotcha, okay. Okay, item F is, she is going to reprint and change the dates. The dates on this notice here are Friday, May seventeenth, and then, uh...
Open on...
Yeah, the twentieth, but they close the fifteenth. So, it's not gonna be quick enough.
Oh, no.
So, you have to give two weeks then?
We have two weeks notice and then two days after that.
Yeah, you gotta have two full weeks.
Okay, just look and see if that...
So, that's what she passed.
So, may, so may... If that were... Okay, so, okay, let's see. You run, sorry, you run it from the first one, you run it from the eighth to the fifteenth, the second one, the fifteenth to the twenty-second, and we don't meet on the twenty-eighth. No, we did meet on the twenty-eighth of May, do we not?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you, you would, that's when we're in notice, so it'd be the twenty-eighth.
We could open them, but you can give them an extra week if you want to. What's this for, the, uh, the building? I think you might wanna give them an extra week.
So, if we give them till Friday and then open on June?
I think that'd work.
Okay.
I think that'd work.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
Here's an original.
Okay, so we need a motion? Need a motion on item F to approve the bid zero-two, twenty-nineteen A for the revision bid for the Waukeeta Fire Department building project.
I move that we accept the revisions to zero-two to two thousand nineteen A versus the bid revised to two thousand nineteen, revisions of bid specifications for Waukeeta Fire Department.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, purchase orders and travel claims review.
I make a motion to review purchase orders and travel claims.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to review purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Bobbit, I'm sorry. Hess?
Yes?
Bobbit, yeah, Stenson. I'm just looking at her initials and...
That's okay.
We only got a stack of them, two of them now.
Motion carried. Desi, can you read my stamp?
Yeah, really.
You can have that for this. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, these are signatures.
These don't have a file folder.
We don't get enough for five, I don't know.
No, right. Cost too much. We gotta keep our budget down. Ooh, Max, she didn't sign that one.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Is Katia a requisitioning officer for the OSU? Who's their receiving officer?
I'm one of their receiving officers.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, her and Cassie are receiving.
I got it, yeah, all right.
Oh, you got your deal done on your book recording now?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's good, but it wasn't quite exactly everything we thought it was going to be.
Uh-oh.
It didn't put all of the grantor and grantee stuff in. And I kinda got into it with Scott a little bit, and then after talking to Kelpro, they're, I'm not the fir-, we're not the first time he's done that too, so...
So...
I mean, it's indexed in by page number and they're all scanned in. Just Mindy's happened to go in and put some of the information in. And, and Mindy even said to you, she said, you know...
They didn't say you nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it all online now? I mean, so, so when we get moved out, people can go online?
Well, they're...
I mean, if they...
Or, I mean, not all of it's out there yet.
Okay.
But we have access to it online, yeah.
Yeah, so if someone needs something...
Right, we don't have to kind of pull the book.
Yeah, you might have to later or something.
Right.
Then you might be able to get it all on...
Yeah, we can, we can find the document and print it out, the recorded thing. It's just, we don't have it completely through the whole process to, to get it out there to the website. But she's working on it, so...
Okay, so we've put the money in your account, right?
We did that last night.
Yeah, okay, I thought so.
Yeah, we're trying to do that.
Okay.
We need to go talk to Scott on the phone, Casey, and they'd like to go with the...
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, I'm trying to get bids on that stuff, so...
On their book there.
Just hit the escape button on the, uh, on the key.
I hear?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the last of that folder. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, I hope it was a little accurate. No, I'm wanting quotes. I've got Casey Electric over there, and, you know, I haven't gotten a quote. Everyone's supposed to give me a quote around in the book.
Okay.
Do the new deals, isn't it?
Yep. Well, I guess like, if they could get it done, that'd be great.
Well, I mean, we've had, I'm going to go through the other companies that have issued inquiries, so I'm not one of them. I mean, I feel like we just need to go with Faith Electric until we get all the quotes.
Right, exactly. That's the last of that folder.
When was Alex coming over to my shop to talk about the, the sweets and things?
I don't know, she's, she's all set.
Hello, from...
I think the eighth or something like that, but I'm not sure.
Maybe he doesn't check with them.
Yes, please.
Hello, what's your schedule for going to District One for open enrollment? Thursday morning to District One. And then to District Three. Okay, thank you. Okay, bye.
Thursday morning, huh?
Thursday morning.
What did she say, District Three was?
It's on Wednesday morning.
We bought a power washer. Scott bought a power washer.
Yes, he did. And he's gonna use it to clean the air conditioner out of the temporary building. But he's gonna use it to spray stuff. He, he said that the planters were looking drab. And he wants to keep them looking. He's gonna power wash them and get them cleaned out. But he just told me this morning he was gonna take over and wash the air conditioner and unit that off.
Well, and I kind of visited with him. Once we get them all set, if he can power wash the outside of that building before the, where the breeze, what he's working, there's a lot of hog webs and stuff and all that.
Uh-huh. Yeah, it'll be handy.
Yeah, I have one at home. Not that I know how to use it, but my kids do.
Yeah.
Well, it's a little small, you know, a little, little one.
Yeah, yeah, hundred dollar one, yeah, yeah.
So it's not like it's going to do a lot. Just be careful of them lunging out to fire it.
Well, I think he said he planned on trying to use it, like to clean the outside windows and, you know, so.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's what I do. I lung out all my stuff.
Yeah, and then it comes back and it's no good, no good.
Every time it seemed like Ronnie and I ever borrowed anything, we broke it and then we had to go buy something new. I do not process that last page application, but it's probably literary here today, so we'll kind of see what we're at maybe by next week, if that works. Oh, that's me.
Yeah. Well, that's on County General though.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
Both of the counties general. Yeah, both of those are on County General. That's the last one for that folder.
Okay, here you go.
Thank you.
Now, did we get a grant on these gas detectors? I think I've asked you that before, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, okay. Is that going this way?
No, let's check.
That's a separate one.
There, no, not the first one, no. That will be the last one that will go there. This is the second one. That's a single. So now we're going to the county line to get them first.
Yes.
And we either use that list or Google Map or whatever.
Right.
And so you attach a copy of the...
Oh, gotcha.
So that you know, so then that's how you figure it out. And it's from the county line to wherever, but you start it at the county line.
So we start from county line and back to the town.
Where are they going?
Yeah, sure, sure. What happens if you don't turn your out-of-count and travel in for that for a month?
Oh, I mean, just got it within that fiscal year.
Well, that's good because I'm too much behind. Well, until you turn in, you don't get paid for it, I guess. That's true.
If you remember Ron Hula, he used to do it once a year.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, yeah.
And then he could just go Christmas shopping or whatever, you know, yeah.
But he used a, I don't, he didn't take the stipend. We didn't take stipends in. But it was usually a lot of tolls and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the end of that folder.
Are you ready for a folder?
I'm ready for a folder.
You'll love this.
That's, that's probably District Two.
It is.
Yeah, we seem to be buying everything since we've been in the shop so much.
You got several candles in them, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There's six or eight of them in here.
I don't know, I don't know.
Cindy, what did you find out about that bid? There's a GPS.
Oh, we don't have to go off the grid.
Good. Well, they're advertising and they're going out to be good enough then.
Yeah.
Good. Here's your...
I did ask Stephen about that.
Okay, thank you.
Then I did talk to Stephen about it.
Good.
And he said as long as we're not changing any of the terms. I said, no, all the sales tax money that we did import goes to now.
Yeah, okay.
We're basically paying for a service, so.
Good enough.
These are all the same one, yes.
Did Holly call you about, um, PO numbers for trucking?
Um, I thought we encumbered that one after we approved it. But we didn't find out.
Okay. We may have.
Hi, is Alex right there? I just needed to know, didn't we already encumber for that hundred thousand for Holly Fire?
No, a hundred thousand is taken care of.
Oh, okay, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about for shipping. They...
Oh, oh, he wants to know whether they encumbered for the shipping of that.
Yeah, forty-five hundred dollars.
The fire rescue truck, the Holly Fire. Okay.
They would have done it Friday this morning, so.
So we've got, we've got one for the hundred thousand, but they haven't, they didn't call on Friday and encumber for the shipping? Okay, I'll let Max know, thank you. Okay, bye. They didn't call on Friday and encumber.
Okay, thanks. Well, Jay called me, and he called me this weekend, in fact, after that. So he called me Thursday night, and then he called me Friday, and then he called me Saturday. But they was, he was gonna go up and get it, but things happened and he wasn't gonna be able to, so. I just told him, I said, all they needed to do was call up and get a PO, since it was under five thousand. They got somebody, he didn't know how much it was gonna be that's gonna backhaul it for them.
Hopefully cheaper than that five hundred bucks or so.
Oh, well, yeah, cheaper than that is the deal. He thought twenty-five hundred dollars.
No, that other one was like forty-two hundred. That local person there.
Up there, okay.
So that is definitely cheaper than what the first quote was. Or not quote, I guess estimate.
Well, if there was a, if there was a quote or bid on there and stuff, I hope he...
No, it was not a quote. I missed it. It was just the gentleman that from the Potter addition. Like there was a local mover and he had checked with him on what it was costing.
Gotcha, gotcha. Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, she's getting paper with that.
You know, that PO, I didn't want to have that in there.
We bought a bunch of tubes. From DTC Construction, so we went to our six-month bid. If I'd have bought them all now, it would've been fifty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars ninety-eight since I got it for three thousand dollars.
Is this the one right out here? Okay. I'm gonna buy them.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. Since we didn't buy it off six-month bid, I needed to document that.
Well, I'm glad you got a bid because somebody needed them.
Fine, I missed it?
Not yet.
Not yet, long meeting today.
I was just gonna see if there was any news on moving. If not, well, I wouldn't consider it for everything.
Well, theory it. Yeah, I was gonna kind of update all the things I've kind of been working on and dates and stuff, so. But if you, if you want, I can...
No, I was just... We were paying the purchase orders and...
Tell me about you whenever.
Yeah, that'd be fine, I was just gonna...
Yeah, 'cause we've got a few before that, so.
No, that's fine.
Okay, won't be too awful long.
Tim?
Yeah.
Hey, uh, if you guys are, guys got somebody that's free over there or something, we can go up to Anthony to the grocery store at Jean's IGA and see Pat posting, we can pick up a bunch of boxes up there. and see Pat posting, we can pick up a bunch of boxes up there. Bunch of boxes to bring over here to the courthouse. And we'll have to just get with, with Scott Fulkenberg when we get over here with him. I don't know how a guy's gonna haul them, you know what I mean? They may blow out of a pickup if a guy drives fast. I looked at Kurt's trailer down there and it's two-thirds full, but it's been out in the rain, so I'm sure the boxes are wet any yet.
That's the last month of that folder.
I did last week, and he told me we could come up there, uh, Saturday and get some, but it didn't work out for me to go. So, I didn't, I didn't get up there, but Pat posting is who I talked to. Pat posting. He's back there in the meat department. And he told me they, they keep thirty or forty boxes up there in that room, so, but we can come up and get them, okay? All right, thanks, Tim, bye.
These are all of our lease payments that we pay once a month.
Right.
And did you ever get a copy, I think, did you get a copy of that, what you have, what all your equipment is and what you're paying on it?
Yes, I did, I did.
Is this easement for public highway, is that? This must be for Steve's, this is the pinnacle, this is the one after.
Okay, so that's the next, okay, here's the.
Well, two down.
I don't know what the easement for public highway.
Is that pinnacle?
No, I know pinnacle's your deal, your bridge.
Hi, okay, was the easement of.
Your Zolladick deal too. And this one here is after item P, easement for public highway.
Is that what that is? So I basically kinda didn't need that one on there maybe?
Item H.
Yeah, do we have it?
Okay, that's the easement for public highway, that's the. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, now, the others too, sorry, I think I have it on there, kinda on there again. Okay, can you come in here and look and make sure I'm giving them the right thing?
Steve, these are your, please, you need to watch the line down here and that's one at the top, you need to sign.
Oh, you need to that right there, okay, so we have to. It was just copies, he just gave me copies, so good with. Acknowledging it, well, see, I had, I probably didn't need to have that on there, 'cause I've got easement of public highway, and then I've got the payments down here. Mm-hmm. Are we just acknowledging that they filed? Yeah, yes, you can, and then, so that, and they can sign this. Okay, I should've had those together. Yeah. Okay, all right. There's the two of them, okay, thank you very much.
No, not that one, just, yeah. Probably call Alex to come get those up, he's got a couple more signed.
Hi, keep signing the last two POs and sorry, we got a.
No, it's your shirt.
Oh, that's about pretty low, that's just pretty low.
Even for me.
Yeah, that's pretty low.
Okay, approval of purchase orders and travel claims. Uh, motion to approve travel orders and purchase claims.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve purchase order and travel claims, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item H, blanket purchase order.
I move to approve blanket purchase orders as presented.
I second that. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And up here. Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
So you're getting a blanket for.
Motion carried.
That must be on that dozer or something.
That was on the dozer.
On the dozer.
Okay, item I, balancing between treasure and first offices as of March thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Alex did a good job, I, I gave it to her and the same day she returned it back to me, balanced. Um, there's a few things with Kelpro. Uh, if you look over to the right-hand side, there's a couple of them, and that's due to a chart of accounts issue. Um, down below is general, and I don't know whether, um, of course, that's tax collection. But I don't know whether, um, Robin Fast showed her how to balance the general and the health. I think she was gonna talk to her about it, did she, Cindy?
I don't really know, I, Alex didn't need to tell me about it, I know her and Robin visited several times on things, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanted Alex in here to explain your side of it or what, but.
So, or do we think we're, we think we're in balance except for the, it says not appro, do you want me to have her come in?
Yeah, I think it, um, I think that might be better.
She's coming, purchase orders and that. Aye, is Alex coming this way? Well, we have a question for her, so when she gets, we were on balancing in the treasure, so we have a question for her. Okay, thank you, bye. Question, I just.
One of the things that, did you look over those reports that were part of the documentation? Because the weird thing, and maybe it's the chart of accounting, I don't know, but one of the odd things is, um, that there's more warrants paid than registered.
Yes, oh, that's weird. You were just going over the, they were, you were going over the treasure balancing, and Penny was mentioning, did Robin and Fast talk to you about the balancing of the general fund?
And the health?
Yeah. We kinda started working on that a little bit.
Okay.
But she said it was, um, best to start it when we start the new year.
Okay.
Because, um, you go month to month, starting with your miscellaneous receipts.
Right.
Um, but yes, we started looking on it.
Okay, great.
So she did show me how we should be doing it.
So we'll be able to do it in July?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So this adjustment caused this minus six fifteen ninety-four.
Did you give them the documentation on that, Cindy? Because they may wanna look at and see how that happened. But I, I was asking Cindy about the, on those treasures some line, that you guys print out?
Ah, okay.
It shows more, more warrants registered or paid than registered.
Does that come back?
Is that just chart of account?
Come back before we can add, so that'll show up for two years.
Are you saying reserve?
Yeah, it's reserved for two years.
I know, that's so weird.
Two years.
We need to get.
Okay, got it.
Ask them about that, probably does. Okay. Thanks, Alex, you did a good job.
She's not sure why that is either, with the paid, paid one or registered.
The million three six eighteen twenty-three not appropriated.
So not everything's appropriated, some of those ones are just, or they don't get appropriate. So she's, that's what she says, they're gonna start actually in July twenty nineteen on the health and the general, so I can start pushing that.
Which basically would be that every miscellaneous receipt on health or general, I mean, was that part of it maybe, that it wasn't being put in our system?
Well, no, the, the thing you don't put in your system is the tax collection. So that's something that you gotta account for as a variable. Because the tax collection is going to obviously change.
Right.
On my general ledger, and not your appropriation ledger, but you still need to, you know, account for.
And then you just kinda have to do it as, once it's appropriate, I, I guess, yeah, I'll discuss it with you or hopefully, yeah, it's kinda confusing for me.
The appropriation or the apportionment, because I, I do both.
You do both.
And you only do one. You do the appropriation.
Appropriation.
Yeah, miscellaneous receipts are easier to track, but the taxes also come over when I give you the front page apportionment report. So you know exactly how many taxes goes into the general and the health.
So that we just be able to go off of those reports and start viewing, okay, yeah. I have started actually looking at those whole charts a lot better, and, oh, okay, that's where those figures come from.
Okay, so on the left, we want that, we want the balance. We, like, uh. Okay, uh. Item J, twenty nineteen twenty-five declaration of surplus wood filing and roller shelves for the treasurer's office. All right, um, we move the declaration of the wood filing cabinets and roller shelves for the treasurer's office.
Same.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Okay. And item K, wait, let me get this signed and get it on the way. Item K, twenty nineteen twenty-six resolution of disposing of the equipment, wood filing and roller cabinets from the treasurer's office.
I move to approve twenty nineteen dash twenty-six resolution for disposing of equipment, the wood filing and roller shelves from the treasurer's office. Where is it going? Going to the election, transfer to the.
Transferred to election.
Uh, not all of them, just that specific one. And if you guys have a need for them.
There's three of them here listed. Uh, C eleven three, C eleven dash one, and one oh four dash ten.
Yeah, they're actually those, the pocket pulls, if you remember those.
Yeah.
Yeah, the drawers type thing.
About this wide.
Not the roller shelves.
Yeah.
So, so we need to put on here, what, because you've got, probably been better had we had that on two pages, because you've got.
Well, she's got, she's got a bunch of other rollers on this.
Well, that's another, we need to know which ones go into the election board for them to put on their inventory and which ones you're junking.
Isn't that all of them?
Are they all going to the election board?
Those are all the drawers, are they not?
Well, then those two, are the roller shelves going to them as well, or are we junking those?
Um, she put her name on them, and she went in there with a sticky note, so I'll just go back there and check real quick.
Okay.
And make sure she puts them on her inventory. Yeah, I have been putting sticky notes on, she needs to stare on everything.
She gonna have her office full before she.
I hope we leave her where she's at. That'll be on the tape, she'll see it, and there'll be trouble.
She's gonna have to move those to wherever she moves, so in her office, I mean, she'll have to move those with her when she moves. Into the temporary deal. Like the filing cabinets upstairs, and all of that stuff will have to go with her. So you need to make sure she's aware of that. Right, yeah, she needs to know that.
Okay.
And make sure she's putting all that stuff on her inventory.
Yeah.
So like, I don't know if OSU, I haven't seen them surplus or move those filing cabinets, so you'll need to ask Cassie to get that done.
That was one of the questions.
They traded off, so it's not traded, it was traded to knock that off.
She moved all of her stuff down there upon.
Well, they're depending on these, so I thought the women's, women's building.
Well, yeah, that's kinda what they were wondering to see what they needed to do down there.
Yeah, they want to clutter up the new building.
Okay.
I think that's what Phil was worried about.
Oh, oh, oh. I don't know.
I, I, yeah, it'll be fine.
That was a question I had.
You know me, I'll just say, uh-uh.
Yeah. That was their whole deal, they didn't want it all.
Okay, we, we have a motion, uh. Cindy, Cindy Bobbit made a motion, Steve seconded on the twenty-sixth, which is the one we're signing. That's the one Penny checked on, they're all going to the.
We need to a vote.
Election.
Yeah. Yes, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Okay, item L, twenty nineteen dash twenty-seven, declaration of surplus roller shelves from treasurer's office.
Wait a minute.
Okay. There is different.
Wait a minute, we got K to do.
Oh, we just did that one.
We just did G.
Oh, got ya, sorry, I'm behind.
We had had that and then the question came up.
We got you, sorry, yeah.
And twenty-seven, nobody wants these.
I guess not. I, I have to go to the house and I guess they don't.
Do what?
There's very few books that we have anymore, so I've asked Cindy's office and she's gotten what she wanted and the rest of them, nobody wanted, so. Do you want them?
Yes.
You can have them. They're real cheap.
Okay, whether or not, go ahead.
I will, do you want me to, you need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Surplus on roller shelves, treasurer's office.
Yes. Steve made the motion.
Oh, sorry, I'll second that one.
Cindy seconded.
That's number twenty-seven.
Number twenty-seven, yes, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Okay. There we go. Now, item M is also, it's twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, declaration of surplus roller shelves, treasurer's office. It looks like a repeat.
There's a lot of roller shelves.
A lot of roller shelves, they're all, we, they.
They're all from different numbers.
All the door numbers.
Yeah.
This one doesn't have.
That's a one, that's eleven, I got you, I was just saying.
The double, yeah, not a one, it's a eleven.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the declaration of surplus, uh, twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight for roller shelves from the treasurer's office.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Okay, item N, that's got them surplus. Now, item N is twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, revolu, resolution of disposing of equipment, roller shelves for the treasurer's office. And this one here's got them all listed up here.
From all of those?
Yeah, for both of them, I looked, their, the numbers are all.
Are they metal?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I was gonna say, I can pick those up and we can recycle, I mean, we got, we got a bin down there that we can pick them up and then when we haul our scrap iron off, then, then we can.
Okay, do you get paid for the scrap iron?
We do a little bit, that's, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we take quotes, we take phone, we call Enid and Conca, there's two places, we can probably pick those up today since it, I'll have to check with.
Have to get the books out of them first.
Oh, gotcha.
We're in the process, but we don't have anywhere to go with them as far as like the trash can that we've got out here, we maybe hold a couple of shelves, and that's it.
You're gonna trash the books too?
Yes.
Well, if you'll box those books up, we can burn those.
Okay.
I mean, would they burn though, books very well?
They will burn, I mean, they're paper, obviously, but, um, but there's a lot. They will burn, I mean, they're paper, obviously, but, um, but there's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's some from, I mean, I'm not running the historic.
After the meeting, I'll come look at them and see if we could pick them up and burn them, or what we need to do with them.
You can burn them. Now, how big are the boxes gonna be? Because they're heavy as heck.
Oh, got you.
Uh, they're tax rolls that we no longer need, like from, you know, the seventies, the eighties and.
Yeah, I'll come look at it.
Does that have, does that have to be burned?
Well, you have to, well.
They don't have to, because there's really not.
It's all.
Private information.
I just wonder.
I, I mean, you know, we've got a burn pile, but we obviously, I guess we can stir, we don't, we don't babysit them and stir it.
Right.
We dump it in there and then we go down there and we might stir it a little bit, we don't, but we don't fit there and.
Yeah.
Constantly, you know.
Well, there's nothing private in these things.
It's public information.
It's public information, yeah.
So we need to be, they didn't burn all the way through, you know, eventually they'll burn. Or, or tear it.
There's some we're keeping, I mean, there's, there's some really old ones, county L, that we're keeping, obviously, just for historical purposes. But the rest of them are way overdue as far as being destroyed.
I entertain a motion to dispose of this roller shelves.
I will give that to you, I moved that resolution for disposing of equipment, roller shelves, treasurer's office, two thousand nineteen twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Um, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye. Motion carried. Hazardous mitigation.
If you haven't, wait a minute, if you haven't already disposed of them, we can't do disposal, because you technically still have them.
Well, we did a surplus right before.
A surplus.
Yeah, but she hasn't, you haven't disposed of them yet, you're not, you.
Well, I can't lift them, Cindy, I mean, they're heavy.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, do we, I mean.
Do we have to give permission or something?
But, I don't know, are we, I'm just saying, do we need to, we need to make, wait till you dispose them to approve that? Because if you get, if they're.
No, I have to have the paper.
I would say that you have to have permission, probably.
I mean, you guys have all done surplus and disposing on the same agenda.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
I'm assuming that it was.
I just thought if you're not ready to dispose of it, it's still in your inventory, right?
Well, but how can I dispose of it if I can't move it? That's my, that's my deal right now, is I do want to dispose of it, and I would like to dispose of it.
Well, you just have to. Will it be ready by this week?
Yeah, I mean, if I have a place to go with the books, of course.
Well, and she says she'll have it ready this week, so if it's ready this week.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Does anyone need to come in on your hands?
So are you gonna take and unload the books? I mean, are you gonna undo them out of the shelves?
Yeah, I, it's, if I have a place to go with them, yes, I can. Like, we maybe emptied one shelf in this trash bin out here and then it was half full, so I, I had to leave room for some other officers to use the trash. But if District Two will come pick them up, I can get, I mean, if you want all the books and the shelves, that's fine.
No, we don't. We don't.
Okay, so you're worried about me disposing of it, so what is it that you're wanting me to do?
Well, I was just getting to the point that I, if you, once we do the disposal, that means it's disposed.
It's supposed to be gone.
It's supposed to be gone. And it's technically not gone yet, so.
Uh-huh.
So, I, I get that, it's like us, once the.
If I sell my mower and I surplus it, then I take it to a sale and I sell it, then I do the disposal.
Yeah, once it's off the property, because if they, if somebody walks in and looks at, and walks in for your inventory and all of a sudden, all of these books are there and they see inventory numbers on them and it's not on your inventory, you say, well, you disposed of them, you, you trashed them. Well, you didn't trash them because they're in your physical, you still have physical.
Control.
Control of it.
So how have we done that in the past?
Once you get rid of it, you dispose.
I know, well, but I, I do know that we've done agendas where we've had, where the highway has had disposal and surplus at the same time.
Yeah, because, we have, yeah, because.
Yeah, because usually when that happens, we've already disposed of it.
Well, aren't you supposed to surplus it?
And we were supposed to surplus it before.
Yeah, we've had the problem, it's a half of it, it's really, yeah, we might not have got it timely, surplussed.
Okay, so you should have surplus it before you disposed of it on that agenda.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so now, now we're doing it right with what I've got then, okay. I sign it, I don't sign it.
Once it's gone, that's when you dispose it, once it's gone and you don't have control of it, that's when you dispose of it.
Okay, item O, hazardous mitigation plan. This is what you got, and we didn't get on the agenda.
Last week. Yeah, well, it was on the agenda, but the DA hadn't.
DA hadn't signed off.
And he has now?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, here we go. Pretty much all that is, is just our state and local agreement, it's just saying that we're gonna abide by the rules of the grant that we, that we received.
Okay.
So.
We need a motion then. You guys good with that?
I am.
All right, hazard, uh, I move that we approve the hazard mitigation plan for OEM state and local governments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Okay, now, we need to sign up here, elected official.
Yeah, it just has to be signed by the chairman and then it has to be notarized by.
And what the calls is coming over.
Okay. Is there one copy here or two?
Just one.
Just one copy.
Just one copy, okay.
Yep.
This is where. I guess we need to write.
You have to sign first.
Oh, yeah, and then I have to print my name on it, golly.
Well, even if you'll just sign it, I'll fill the rest of the stuff in.
She can scan it, maybe, because I don't, I don't need a, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pick up and read it right now, but.
Just pretty much the same as we signed for it, so. Just the one that we've already signed was the agreement with FEMA and this is with.
State.
State OEM, yep.
Okay.
Today's the sixth.
That's correct.
No, that's gonna look a little funny in there, yes?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And you've already had one meeting, right?
Yep, we had our first meeting.
The thirtieth month of April.
And our next meeting's gonna be the twenty-third. We're gonna, we're gonna do the twenty-third of this month and then starting in June, we're gonna do two a month to try to get them.
Yeah.
Notary someone, this is like where the notary.
The quicker the meetings, we can have it quicker, we can have it.
What time are we at, twenty-third?
The twenty-third's at noon in Palm Creek at the Fairgrounds Building.
I don't know, they have a lot of these, this is how it is.
Yeah, all of our meetings, that's what they, they wanted to do at noon, they said it's easier for them all to show up if we have it during the daytime.
I think you're probably right, I think you probably did get a better turnout.
Because our first meeting, we did not have a good turnout, so I need to do what works best for everybody.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly.
There always can be a meeting now.
Are you gonna feed them, Steve?
Yes, we're gonna feed them.
Now, I'm going now.
That's what I said.
If you, if you provide food, you have a good turnout.
That's what I said, I said, we'll do food at all the, the rest of them, so I gotta do what I can to get everybody else, I guess it's done.
Okay.
I could know that you're gonna finish.
We got that signed, item E, easement of public highway. He's for public highway.
Oh, I think we just acknowledged that they filed those.
Okay, this is the Zolladec, which is down R. Three twenty-four A on that project, it's for Steve down there. And Pinnacle went and helped, uh, the item S, Pinnacle Consulting, helped Steve get the clearance here, the permission. And we're paying Zolladec this money for a section of ground.
How much money you paying them?
I'm paying them, uh.
Six twenty-five.
Six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Steve, did you look or did Pinnacle look, I guess they looked.
Steve, the reason we did that is because we didn't have a commissioner, but.
Yeah, yeah, I've kinda, I've, I've got a call in to, uh, uh, Donnie Head wanted me to go ahead and, and we need to go ahead and get the, uh, all the, so they can go in there and do their testing for these pilings and things for this bridge. So he wanted me to go ahead and, of course, when he told me that, then it's been raining ever since, so. Um, I have got a call in to the Reynolds, I've got a call in to Darren to start discussing this, his dad's been out of town, probably won't be out of town till the end of the week, but I've got a call in to Darren to sit down. Seems like, according to Darren, that they're pretty close on, I just explained to him that we need to go out and look at it and, but his dad's not in town. So it's, it's kind of a sensitive, a sensitive deal on this and, uh, I got, I'll probably talk to Darren sometime this week, him and I'll go out there and then when his dad gets back, we'll sit down and.
I was, in, like, Max gets, we've always got all of our, and the only reason we did that is because we didn't have a commissioner.
Yeah.
But we've always got everything donated, we've never had to pay, you know, pay someone to go get it and then they obviously, the way they handle it is they don't ask for donation, they just pay them, they do it. But, you know, in the future, you might want to keep that in mind that we try to get all of our, especially when you start on that Jefferson Road, you don't want to have to start paying people.
No, I know.
You know, most people are just glad they get a road or get a bridge, so they'll donate it to the county, so.
Absolutely.
So we, so the easement of the public highway, we're just gonna acknowledge that it's been filed on book and page with that for the easement.
Okay, just acknowledge it.
Acknowledge it, okay.
Yes.
Don't need a motion, just acknowledge it.
Item Q, zoning for public building codes letter, uh, to Neva Swetan Gruber.
Swartzen Gruber.
Swartzen Gruber.
Is she Japanese?
Hmm, that's German.
Twenty seven three fifty-three County Road ten ninety, Deer Creek, Oklahoma. And this letter just says, uh, you're requesting zoning verification and building permit requirement. It is a commissioner's desire to write you this letter as an official notification. Currently, the Grant County Board of Commissioners has no established zoning or building rules, regulations, or restrictions for areas outside of cities and towns. However, the statute could change, so please contact this office for any future building plans. As always, we will need to follow the state laws establishing a, whoa. For establishing a medical marijuana cultivation operation. Additionally, Grant County is reviewing current and new legislation to see how it will affect county issues. If you have any questions or concerns, please call Desi Scott, room one oh four, three nine, five eight oh, three nine five, two two one four, Medford, Oklahoma.
I would move to sign the letter for the medical marijuana operation for, um.
Neva Swartzen Gruber.
Neva, there it is, Swartzen Gruber.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I second that.
Yeah, I second it, okay. Cindy moved and Steve seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
There is a bunch of legislation that passed this year, and I know Cleveland County was running one that would, uh, for permits, you know, for fees, so.
So you say, can't the county make some money off of those?
Right, that's what, that's what they're doing, they're gonna, gonna, it's a fee.
What about Joe Hayes, did he ever get county permit down there?
Well, we don't permit it, we, we did.
They got to acknowledge that, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
That's what I meant.
Yes, he did.
Item R, ODOT Form three twenty-four A, six hundred and twenty-five dollar payment to Eddie Zolladec and Sons on this job number twenty-eight forty-one six oh four and the whole.
I will move that we, uh, except they're, pay the six hundred and twenty-five dollar payment to Eddie Zolladec and Sons for job number two eight to four one six oh four.
Oh, sorry, you need to sign that. And I'm reluctantly second that.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I know it.
Yeah, just let the minutes reflect that, we don't, we usually ask for donations and because we didn't have a commissioner, just let the minutes reflect that. I don't want to set a precedent on that.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Um, Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Motion carried. And we want to sign it over here.
Um, yeah, you sign there. And then, I don't know, but on the other ones, we all three signed one, two, and three, but I don't know that we do on that one.
Well, I think we ought to.
Yeah, I think we ought to.
Probably not gonna hurt anything.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Here's the. That's the letter, take Zolladec there.
Oh, that needs to be attached to, for that.
Okay, and this one, and now we're down to item S, ODOT Form three twenty-four A, for payment to Pinnacle Consulting Management Group, job twenty-eight forty-one six oh four and the whole, for twenty-six hundred dollars for District Three.
Is this, this is a, oh, yeah, this is fifty percent, so we haven't paid, we've paid part of it.
Acquisition of.
Fifty percent for, so we've, we've paid them for something and now we're paying them. Third, oh, third, we paid thirteen hundred dollars for each parcel?
For each parcel, for them to, well, we just paid for, we just, they, this is a consulting group that has been negotiating for that. We paid one landowner.
Yeah, it would've been one parcel, but our.
Well.
Yeah, it's a, parcel one is a point zero acres of highway easement, parcel one point one is point four acres of temporary construction easement.
Okay, this breaks it down, uh, title a hundred percent, the parcels was four hundred dollars and then the manager acquisition a hundred percent, six hundred dollars.
Do we need to pay for that too, or is that, that included in it? So we're buying, right? Oh, gotcha, okay, that's included.
That's just kind of the damages and what they're gonna have to do to get out of our way, probably, you know what I mean?
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion.
Pretty silly, but.
Yeah, that is. I'll make a motion to pay Pinnacle for job two eight four one six oh four and the whole for twenty-six hundred for D three.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and been seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Item T, acknowledged status of Department of Human Resources, DHS, payment of rent as termination of lease effective five thirty-one of twenty nineteen.
They have paid through April, it's available. What was appropriated, it went through the appropriations today, the April payment, the April rent, so there should be one payment left.
So we just have to acknowledge that there's one thing.
Yeah, it says acknowledged status.
Okay, thank you for checking on that.
Item U, reappointment of Ms. Megan Grease, Grant County Health Department Board, term expires six thirty of twenty-three.
And I thought, well, because I had them like this and one's a copy, one is actually Steve Stinson and one is Megan, so if you want me to put acknowledged on Steve, because we have Steve Stinson also.
I went to that meeting the other day.
Yeah, see your certificate when you go to the meeting.
So, no, but we've, because we already appointed him to the board.
Right, right, so can you, I would think, now here's Megan, so.
So, okay, so we need to.
So we need to, we need a motion to up her, or reappoint her. I move that we reappoint, uh, Ms. Megan Grease, the Grant County Health Department Board, term expiring six thirty of twenty-three.
I, I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and been seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Stinson.
Aye.
Is Megan not that?
Yeah, I guess she.
She was at the meeting and that's what.
I think she's one that has, they have to be certain people.
She's a nurse, probably.
Yeah, the nurse, uh-huh.
Hi, we're almost to the relocation stuff. Hi, we're almost to the relocation stuff.
Oh, this one's fifteen, oh, this is an old one, I guess.
Shows it expired.
These all say fifteen, these say fifteen to nineteen.
To nineteen, fifteen to nineteen.
Where?
That's the old one.
Oh, they've got it, they've moved down there, don't they?
Yeah.
They've got it right, they've got it right here, because see, they've got expire in June.
Oh, I see.
Oh, is it saying, that was a previous term.
Formally held, okay, formally held, to be, okay. I guess it helps to read the whole font.
Aye.
How many, okay.
Three apiece.
Three apiece, huh?
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah, because that's, it's held, formally held.
Oh, gotcha.
Got that, okay.
Okay, item V.
Well, that's what you ladies are here for, isn't it?
We're nothing.
Got your attention.
Courthouse renovations and relocation including, but not limited to. Electrical, plumbing, advertisement signs, necessary items.
I'm just trying to think of whatever.
All right, gotcha.
Okay, I have something, well, it's on first on my mind. Um, I spoke with the representative of the Fair Board and we were talking about last meeting about the internet and stuff down there. Uh, Mrs. Reimer, Lacy, she had discussed that she had talked with three different companies about doing that. Well, only one got back with her and still has.
And I have all that documented.
That's in the encounter, is that right? Um, hundred and forty-nine dollars to have it installed and eighty-eight dollars a month is what the contract said.
Well, see, we brought it to the board last week and then Tim.
Tim had mentioned, well, why don't we just bounce it off my county shop over there with a deal? Well, it's an enhancement to this, they don't have it. And I talked with, I talked with Tim Warner and said, hey, do you guys want that in the building over there? I mean, because when they're multimedia, they, they really can't do anything in there right now, there's nothing. So I brought up to him that, I said, well, you guys might as well just put it in there, you know, permanently. And that's what this encounter deal was about. Tim thought about bouncing it off, but it's not going to be real reliable, I don't think.
I agree with you.
And he agreed and I said, well, maybe, you know, because we were talking about, well, you know, we're paying to put that in there and then whenever we're finished with it, we can, the county can pay to put it in there, and when we're finished with it, then they take over the billing, eighty-eight dollars a month for the Fair Board. Tim didn't have a problem with that, so.
I mean, I have the.
Yeah, there it is.
I thought you already signed it. No, you didn't.
No, not officially, we tabled it, we tabled it because Tim has brought that up, so.
But I do have the original.
That's going to be my suggestion, that the county just pay the installer, come in, do it, and then we'll pay for their internet while Cassie's there, and then when she gets out of there, then the Fair Board can take over at that time and pay.
Well, so the Fair Board will pay for the install, because they would have had to pay for an install anyway, right?
Well, I mean, I had to talk to them about, you might as well put it in there, it's going to be an enhancement for your fair building because when people are using it, they want to be able to hook their computers up.
Well, I mean, they had come to me about doing, putting it in there.
So I told them that was up for discussion. Um, that's the part that we would discuss, but it's really, I think, instead of bouncing it off my shop over there, they didn't have any problem with it now, the installation, that can be discussed, it's a hundred and forty-nine dollars. I, I knew that we were going to be paying, you know, that utility up until when Cassie's out of there, then the Fair Board will be back on their budget for it after that.
I, I personally don't mind, it's a hundred and forty-nine dollars, I don't mind paying the install on it for, for this, but I do want to make sure it is a secured line and I think that we need to have password that can be changed on it regularly because, because we'll have a lot of people dragging off of that if they get a password, if they can be a password that.
It'll be locked.
Yeah, it needs to be locked.
Yeah, it needs to be locked.
Needs to be locked and, um, and like if they have.
And that's pretty simple to do.
Yeah, and if they have someone coming in for a workshop, they might have a temporary password that you can then.
You have a visitor's password, right?
Yeah, visitors, but then you shut it off, that deal, so people, you know, Steve's right next door and Steve's going to use it.
What if I want to use it? I've got wifi, people pull up my fucking a lot of the time. Yeah, that's what I thought he was talking about first off my restaurant, I said, mine's not even any good right now. It's pretty good, but.
So I guess my question is.
Took me getting back to Palm Creek, oh, he was talking about my district shop. Okay, we're, we're good now.
Is this something that I need to put back on the agenda or do you think why we?
Well, I thought since we tabled, does it automatically go back to the agenda, does it?
You have to have it on the agenda, we have electrical and plumbing, uh, we don't have connectivity.
And this was a deal that I wanted to get done pretty quick because they're going to be moving pretty quick. So if we have to do it next Monday or whatever to approve it, I suppose that would be fine, they could probably go ahead and send it up.
I think you need it as a line item and it's not on there, so, but I, I don't have a problem with it at all.
I think that would work, and then like I said, when Cassie's out of there, whenever that is, then we can transfer the bill back over to the Fair Board. And then it's there, because that's, that's a huge deal these days, I think. Okay, that's, we'll put it on there for Monday, I suppose.
Yes.
Approve it, if I can let them know that. And the other thing while we're on that is Phil was concerned about Cassie's stuff, and is she taking all of her stuff there? He was.
I know, I talked to him.
Yeah, okay.
He talked to you.
Well, Tim had mentioned that to him and he said, Phil's really worried about it.
Well, and I feel, I feel that if they would let us use the women's building for our extra stuff, because she does have tough stuff for curriculum, so some of us.
Sure, absolutely.
And, and I know that room is really small and I don't want it all in there either, I'll be honest with you, I don't want it all in there either. He said we can use the women's building for all of our extra stuff and so we'll just have what we need for everyday office work.
Okay.
In our office.
That would be good.
Yeah.
So that's been confirmed, and as far as anything else, I can't even wait too late on this, so. Getting rid of penny shelves and stuff, that will help.
Dang right.
Dean, you don't want any of those shelves?
No, I have plenty of my own, thank you.
Bobby?
Good. Thank you, Steve. Our temporary location's going to be this big by the time we get all of our stuff in it.
That's why you have computer stuff now.
That's why those shelves are archaic at this point.
Okay, that's all I had, you guys, just we need to discuss all of this, if there's anything to discuss.
Well, I was just on a kind of update on electrical, I contacted Jennifer Stacy, um, for Stacy Electric. She said Kevin's pretty well, he's tied up, so wasn't necessarily interested but appreciated it. Um, Faith Electric, KC Electric, and Luckinville. Um, Faith Electric and KC Electric were booked over there this morning. Um, and, and I guess Faith thought it was time to install and I said, no, I need the quote first, so I'm waiting to get the quote hopefully today from Faith Electric and KC Electric. I've gotten a quote from Luckinville and it was four thousand seven hundred dollars, so we'll see what comes in on the other. Um, plumbers, I contacted, um, Catatep and, um, Lee Platten, um, and they're both working to give me a quote today. Um, we were kind of waiting for the building to get over here.
Luckinville also does plumbing, I think.
Oh, they do?
Oh, they do.
Yeah, so you might as well call them.
They'll probably be pretty high, but, sure.
Um, and then, um, so that's kind of around that, the buildings are there, the portable buildings, one is on its foundation and one is not yet due to the weather. Um, J. Biz, bang, move, he did call me this morning and they're going to plan to try to come over this afternoon, they're working on getting the, um, the steps put back together and.
Sure, making it right.
Destroying, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, and I contacted, um, Junior Locksmith, Palm City, when I was over there, uh, about rekeying, and then I contacted Dan Cornforce and Dan Cornforce to do the actual rekeying, it's cheaper than what it's even going to cost for Palm City people.
That's pretty good.
So are they going to rekey the doors, is that what they're going to do?
That's what I was saying.
Well, I probably need them to come up to my shop because I need to rekey, uh, for Dina's, uh, the, the judge's room. He, he won't, right now it, it works, he'll want a different, he'll want a different lock for his door.
Right, right.
Anyway, so, so we'll need to rekey that one and the, probably the, the door coming into the courtroom, we probably want to rekey that one as well.
Dan's, Dan's really good.
I don't think Judge would care, as long as the building's locked up, he's not taking a whole lot of stuff.
Well, see, but his door is keyed the same as Paul's door.
Okay, okay.
So he might want a separate key.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
I mean, I don't care, but I just want to make sure he's secure, I just want to make sure he's secure.
Okay.
We won't be cleaning his, probably, I, I'll figure out, I think I'll have Scott come up, I didn't know, we need to talk about that, but we'll do that later.
Figure something out, yeah, okay.
And Dan Cornforce said, you know, he could do it within a few days, so we shouldn't have too much on that. Um, let's see.
You tell them about the bathroom?
Oh, the one, the one building I thought had the place for the toilet, but it doesn't, so there's, oh, actually only a place, the, um, the other building has two bathrooms. And what's kind of strange is then there was that one that has the bathroom, also has like a sink in each, but there's no sense in hooking those sinks up. But just FYI, there are a couple little hot water tanks under there.
Yeah, need one sink, or you need a sink.
We have sinks in each, there's this lavatory in the.
Well, let's go ahead and hook the lavatories up so that you can make coffee, but we have one bathroom that serves this whole first floor anyway, so I think with the.
That's not true, there's a lot of times that people will go upstairs to use the second floor bathroom, there's a lot of those women here. I mean, one bathroom is going to be tough for us.
Well, it's actually two bathrooms, but it's just in the same building.
In, in the same trailer, two bathrooms in the same trailer.
If you put that deck between there.
Yeah, you, you're going to be, you're not going to be out in the weather, it's going to be covered, so I think that ought to work.
You're going to be in there?
Two bathrooms?
She said two bathrooms. You're going to be in there?
There's two bathrooms, but they're in the same building.
Yeah, but there's two.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the moving company, um, I have, it is worked out that they will move, but they'll be here May fifteenth to, and they will start with the District Attorney's Office, um, and then whoever else in the, you know, from there. Uh, they're planning the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, and the eighteenth if needed. I did provide them with, um, the contact information for the Medford Motel and the Palm Creek, the TLC or whatever, the hotel there. Um, and I requested that we would prefer that they keep that in county if possible, um, and he didn't seem to, so I told, I talked to Lori and told her that, you know, hopefully they'll call and get some rooms set up. Um, and then they're planning on, uh, they'll be here on June the sixth to move the Court Clerk's Office and I guess the judges and all that to the second floor. He did, now, the first guy had told me differently on the file cabinets, but I did send out an email, but the long, the long file cabinets are the ones that they want the top drawer emptied. This upright, he said they can remain full. Um, anything else we want moved needs to be boxed up and labeled, clearly as to what office it needs to go to. Um, but they will actually bring, they call it a gondola, uh, and it's kind of basically like, it reminds me of what they put laundry in at a hotel, a big, I guess it's probably the same thing. And he said that could be to, you know, for loose type, it's like this type thing.
Oh, uh huh, yeah.
Oh, those are.
So on those file cabinets, you're talking about the metal ones, right? Like are wood ones in there, do we need to empty anything out of that, the horizontal?
Are they the narrow ones or the long ones?
The vertical, it said you didn't have to take them out.
They don't have to.
You know those long ones where you open up and all your files are in this case?
Like the ones that are in my office, you know?
Desi's office.
The, the top two drawers, I mean, top two drawers need.
Whether they're wood or metal, okay.
Well, I think because they said it could spring them in there, yeah. Yeah, I should have figured that out.
Yeah, and you get them real soft heavy.
They don't have a platform wide enough to get under them all, so, yeah.
Um, let's see, I've, the city, I've contacted the city about all the utilities there, um, OGNB has been contacted um, for the DA's and for the portable, or for four oh nine South Front, um, so we should be good on all that. Um, I was thinking, oh, I contacted Dusty Birdsong, um, and he had me provide him copies of the executed purchase order for the portable buildings, but we are covered. The, I explained where everybody was moving and he said, and I do have the emails stating that we are covered under our current policy. Um, and so we should be good on that front. Um, and do we know where we're at, Tim wise, as far as telephones? Or is he just going to be marrying once they get all the IT stuff in, is that how that works, or do we know?
It's a good question. That should be all included, I would think, in the IT, but maybe not.
I thought it was with the IT, but we'll need to find out.
Yeah, definitely need to want to check on that.
On the phone stuff, okay.
I think that's in the IT stuff.
Well, you would hope.
Well, I mean, they're putting all the lines in, but I guess is Tim going to make sure that it all gets, mirror is what I'm talking about? Yeah, you know, making sure it's all actually working, yeah.
I think the IT deal covers making sure it works.
Well, but that would necessarily.
It probably wasn't, but your lines going to it, they'll make sure that works, but the actually installation of the telephones, I mean, would that?
And making sure that they're communicating with the.
Would that be phone company?
I mean, that's a Tim thing.
Well, they, they have to, I thought part of the deal is they're going to move these phones, so that's part of the IT, right? Moving the phone, unplugging it and plugging it in.
Because they're web, I mean, they're.
Oh, they're all.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all.
See, it all depends on that, if they are a web deal, they're sure.
Oh, yeah, that's true, they're voiceover.
So it should be, yeah, they're voiceover, yeah. So that should be, you might check with Tim, because if they got a problem with the.
Internet.
Internet, it's, it's, Tim's the only one that can touch that phone line and stuff in that.
I'll just make sure that we're good with that, so. Um, and then I didn't know if we needed to do anything, or do we just need to, you know, like do it on the computer, some temporary signs? Or what are we going to do for notifying the public and I know, I've been trying to let people know, but.
We probably, I think we need to every week have an ad in there till we, for, for, for a while, that new location and dates.
Hang around town or on the doors here, because the people that will access these buildings are going to be the ones that are going to use it most of the time.
Dina, you're putting up a sign here and at my shop, what do you, you bought?
No, I just bought two signs to go up to your shop. One says Grant County Courthouse in front of that door, and the other one says Court Clerk's Office through the other doors.
Got you.
But we also made up some maps, and, so we're handing those out every day at, at our dockets and our dockets.
We could get one sign two by two and put temporarily.
Yeah, if we, uh, not get a sign at the CED, but it says where they've moved, put one in the front door and the, of course, the back, they're going to be shut off when they're renovating, they're probably using that, but we probably ought to get some CED signs made up.
Anything you can put up on the doors and things like.
I get with y'all when we're saying and I'll work on getting that down.
Yeah. What's the address?
Let's put so many, Patrick Cindy.
Pretty good size.
Pretty good sized ad that says, in effect, he's like, the DA is moved, going to be moved.
Well, they sent out, and like I did, I, I sent out a thousand emails to all my attorneys, they sent out some to theirs, so every, I mean.
Yeah.
We noticed that everybody.
So people are being, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Put something in the papers.
Okay, on the doors, just a hundred times.
They'll be fine.
So, yeah, but, and that you might say, you know, phone numbers are the same, so.
They can call if they can't find us.
Yeah.
And the mailing address.
The good thing is, yeah, the mailing address is.
Well, I did talk to the post office again.
Just do an address change for.
Yeah, or she said what they could do is they'll just bundle up all the mail every day and then just bring it, I said, well, if they could just bring it like to, you know, say the Court Clerk or the County Clerk's Office, and then it's just, everybody comes and gets their mail or we just burst or whatever.
That works, yeah, you might have a deal with basket or something.
Yeah. Something else I thought about was, um, at the portable location, we need to probably have, um, handicap accessibility.
Sure.
We need a ramp, right?
I talked to Scott about, talking to the movers when they put the deck up about building us a ramp.
Yep.
To go up there, handicap ramp.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, the movers building a ramp?
Yeah, see what they would do, you know, what, what they could do. I know there's steps over there and stuff and we need to go over there and kind of decide what we're going to do. Buildings are nine foot apart and the. Buildings are nine foot apart, and the, the, the way I understand it, there's seven foot of deck in there.
Oh, well, then they need to move that two foot closer.
Well, we're either gonna do that, or you're gonna have to build you a, a little.
No, I told him, I told him when he brought it in that they had to be measured exactly, cause we wanted that to fit, so he's gonna, he, he, the one isn't set down yet.
No.
So I think they, I think when they get it, I'll go up there, yeah, make sure, but it should fit, he should set it up so that it fits exactly.
The deck fits.
Right, yeah, he, that's, the, when they bring it in, obviously, they gotta.
Deal though is gonna be important, and that might be an extra charge of some sort.
I'm sure it will be.
Whether we have a local person do it, or have them do it.
And we could have a local person do it, that, that's.
But that will definitely be an issue.
Yeah.
It will.
Might be cheaper to have someone else do it than him, I don't know.
That's true.
Well, he's got, tell him, don't put the.
And then again, he might say, I'll, yeah, I'll throw you one together.
Yeah, could be, yeah, we can ask him.
Was everything gonna be ready for everybody to start moving out next week? In the next week, you guys move out?
It's, uh, April, May fifteenth.
Yeah, that's what she said, was fifteenth to start.
Fifteenth.
Nine days.
I don't, see, he was supposed to be done, he was supposed to be done Saturday.
Is he, okay.
He was supposed to be, but the weather.
I've been by there, so.
Yeah, one's set, one is not, but we'll need to get him pinned down, remind him that, that.
IT people are coming in and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of it's gonna depend on them.
Yeah, you know we can't, we're not gonna be able to move until our computers can be set up and our phones can be set up. There's no point in trying to work.
Thing in your plumbing and everything else, I mean, that's gonna happen.
Well, the ADA is gonna be the, he wanted to move the fifteenth, so, but we'll need to, we'll need to find out from electricians and everybody that we can do that.
And I did tell them we were on a tight crunch, and they said it shouldn't take long to get that done.
Okay, Cindy, I did have one, in the, where the area we're gonna be, when are you gonna move?
It's already done.
Oh, I should've got that.
It's been done about two, three weeks, yeah, we did it shortly after he was.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and.
Yeah, you can start bringing stuff up.
We're gonna go ahead and start moving, um, Judge's bookshelves out of his office, so the movers don't really have to do all that. And we're gonna move those into the courtroom now, cause we're gonna store those in the courtroom.
Bookshelf in that offices, everything is out of it, we've got a, we've got a big bookcase that we put in the corner, I didn't know where he wanted it, but he can use. We've cleared all that bookcase off to come up there and look, and see what, yeah, you can start bringing in things.
Alright, alright, okay, we might do that next. He'll be, he leaves the seventeenth and we'll be gone for ten days, so um, we're gonna start packing.
Very good, you can start, I'll get you a key.
Okay, thank you, alright, sounds good. We talked last week about the vaults, and did we really need to work on the vaults? Um, you know, we could, we could use that space for storage if we didn't have to worry about people getting in there.
Was that the meeting when Cindy went here that we talked about that?
They've got cracks that we're gonna get repaired, there's some cracks in there, and painting, yeah.
So we could do that, though, after, right?
No, I don't, I, I don't know Penny, because it's the contractors, and if they're here doing something, they're not gonna want to come back later and do it, we'll just have to see what the bid says, and.
Cause painting is a separate bid item, so.
But they're gonna paint around things, so it's not really gonna be a.
That's kind of a sensitive deal we talked about the other day, when we were talking about it, was all of that, all of that stuff coming out of there.
Whether it's gonna be moved and painted behind or whatever.
No, 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 they're gonna bring it in and, and cover everything, the, anything easy to move out, we can move it. But they do have to do some crack repairs and stuff like that, so I personally think it oughta be moved. I mean, not crammed, packed where you can't get into it, excuse me.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I mean, what's in there, I think you can leave, cause we've already looked at that, but the rest of it, I don't, don't pack it full of stuff, yeah.
Is there anything else you have on that?
Parking, what about parking?
Oh, I did, thank you, I did talk to, um, the soil const, Doug Fitch has been over quite regularly. And, um, he was saying, okay, where the buildings are, um, right to the west, which would be directly south of where his building is, they don't have a problem with us parking there. He said if we wanted to, we could haul some gravel in there, there's a little bit of gravel there, but it's not very thick, but anyway, you know, it'd be mushy when it's rainy, but other than that, it's, there's, I think, sufficient, he said he'd move some more of that, move that equipment around and.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gonna move some of that stuff up to my yard.
Is he?
Yeah, yeah, but the, like, the, he's still gonna be able to access inside his building, and he's got that link to that he puts, like, his different things in.
He told me the other day that he could come in the north side of that round top instead of coming in the south.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
But I was talking to him about that trailer over there in the corner and moving that and stuff, really with the court moving up to your shop, you're gonna have more congestion and stuff up there, I think, than we are down there.
Yeah, we're going to try to stage most of our people out of the old shop, so that we'll have the parking up there.
Okay. The, the deal with the deck being there, there's stairs that can come up from the east and come up from the west. Of course, we're gonna have to make our handicap deal, I said make it to the west, be accessible to more.
Cause that's kinda where I think we'll need to kinda have the public parking right there, where they'll face east when they're parking.
And we might park employees on the east side.
Can't park on the east side, Max, that's all grass, and we're gonna pull that tube out, because we're not, we don't, unless we wanna invest in putting gravel, I mean, but that's their grass area, I, yeah.
I say let the, let the public, okay, this is north, and this is west, so the employees
To park over there.
Park over here, and his round top's there, and then the
That's what they did when the FSA was there.
And then they can come in from here.
Where this is, where this machine is parked.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be plenty of room here, and then, yeah.
Just make sure people understand how they need to park, you know, they don't need to park here, and then park here, and then park this way, you know, they.
Okay, see, like, the way the
Yeah.
Yeah.
Buildings sit now, this is north, so on the west side, the public can park here, and then like that round top, and then he's got that link to over here, we'll be able to park right here.
Handicap parking.
Yeah.
So when you, Cindy, when you order those signs, we'll need to order a handicap parking, so we'll have at least one handicap parking there in the front.
Do we know who's going where, like?
Which trailer?
Yeah, which trailer, and is it gonna be the treasurer's office, assessor's office, clerk, Desi?
Well, kinda.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, not quite yet. That's what we talked about before, you know, putting the clerks and the commissioners and the emergency management in one building, and putting the assessor and the treasurer in the other building.
And the election.
And the election board.
Who are we putting in? One, yeah, the one building. In, like, the building that we're in?
In the assessor, treasurer, uh, election board.
Will be in one building, I mean, you each got, they're big, they're, the offices are way bigger than your rooms are now, way bigger than your rooms are now.
And then we're gonna put the commissioners, the. And the clerk.
Manager, and their clerk in one, and we'll have a board.
Secretary and.
We'll have a board in the other.
Will be in one building.
So if we determine which buildings those are gonna be, who's gonna go in what building?
I want the potty.
That's kinda like. That's, that's kinda probably what we're, what we're getting at.
You said Friday morning, you take the one with the potty out of the potty.
Back then, the my girls were like, we want the one with the potty! Well, and it's not even about the potty, it's about the storage part.
No, I just, just use the two, one, I mean, you're gonna have a man, a ma, are you gonna have a man and a woman, or are you gonna make them?
No, it's unisex.
Unisex, that's what I thought. And just use the one.
We'll get a square to put out on the tree for Brad.
I was gonna say Brad can go.
He's the only guy in there.
Yeah, we might just say, you know, I think you just say that we don't have any public bathrooms, I mean, there's plenty of business that you go to that, that don't have them. I think you just make a sign that there's no public bathrooms.
That's what we're doing up your office for Santa.
No public bathrooms, which that's.
I know, yeah, my toilet probably wouldn't handle your.
We're gonna tell everybody, you know, you know, because they dump everything they can in there anyway, so, no.
So I think you just say no public bathrooms.
That, that would be the simplest.
That's what we're doing, it's no public.
Okay. Anybody else have?
What about the interior doors, Cindy?
Oh, there are actually doors, um, on the bathrooms, now, there's a. That, in between the two bathrooms, there is a doorway, so there's no door on that, that's the only place it doesn't have a door. So, then it was discussed, well, if you wanna just close them off, just put some plywood up.
He's gonna share a curtain. How many people, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, how many people are gonna have a key to, whoever's in the building has keys to the building then?
Well, the way the doors are, like, like.
There's four doors, one to each office.
Right, so like this one, that, the
Key, well, key off four.
Bathroom, this one is, you can't get into this other section, you have to go through the door. So these are completely, now, so the only thing that separates the one with the bathroom is the little doorway that I was just talking about that doesn't have a door on it.
Right.
And then these are, like, you have to go in through.
So there is an actual partition between the two?
Yes.
On one of them?
And then this one, there's.
And is it a partition, or is it a wall?
No, it's a wall.
I see.
Mm-hmm, it's a wall, all the way.
Okay.
With the closet thing there, and then closet, yeah, they're more like, and they've got doors on them too.
I, yeah, okay.
Well, it has a sink in it, we thought, I think it could.
So, my, my original question though was, how many people are gonna have a key? Just the people that are housing in there?
I would think, and then probably like Scott.
And this one also has.
I see.
Like, I mean, yeah, you would have a key, and Scott has a key.
And they would have, and the election board would have, yeah.
If that works for you all, yeah, I would say Scott has the master key, and then, um, cause he, I think he, they can key him where he has his, like, a master key. And then just you would have your key, and, and, yeah, well, he can get in everywhere, but only you all can get in.
This is both of them, well, they've already got sinks in them, they just don't have a toilet, so I'm just.
I don't know what they did with the toilets, cause both of them are supposed to have toilets.
Well, they had toilet holes, but I'm like, why didn't, yeah, why didn't they not have toilets in that, I mean, in that?
Yeah.
That didn't make sense to me.
If they both had toilets to begin with, where the hole is?
Well, I, I was wrong, I guess, cause it's just they had, they had.
They told us that, he told us, he told us that they both, he said we never used them, they had, he said they had them, they just never used them. That's what I said, I wondered if they covered them up, and if there are holes, they're there.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna run over there in a little bit, I'll go look, check it out.
Yeah.
You check that hole, woman!
Yeah, um, Kathy wanted me to make sure that our office is in the plan for the movers to move our furniture.
Yes, and I did, and I did talk.
She just wanted to make sure, okay.
Yes, and I did confirm that with.
And they aren't gonna take us to Palm Creek, right?
Right, yes, I told him that you all were, I did tell the mover, Adam Nevis from A One Freeman, that we had one office going to Palm Creek, one office going to another location, another off, I said we have four different locations to where things are being moved, and he said, that's fine, we'll work it all out when we get there.
Okay. So, on the phones, how's that gonna work for us, since we're clearing Palm Creek?
He's gonna have to mirror off of District Three.
I, I thought they were gonna buy you a burner of phones that would, would, we, we could put those in. Tim said he could buy burner phones that would put your num, your current numbers in them.
Okay.
That's a Tim question, because he's the technology, he said it can be done, I don't know enough about it, so that's what he was saying.
So is he up to date and gonna be available when the moving guys come, and is the phones gonna be ready when the IT guys are ready too?
Well, when they're, when they're done, they should be there, ready to go.
But, and does Tim know, I'm saying, have we talked to Tim?
I haven't talked to Tim this week, nor have I talked to the IT guy yet, I mean, just other than I've sent him the acceptance.
When you talked about what your bid you accepted, and so Tim's familiar with it, I mean, I think we, didn't you base your,
We did.
You based your awarding, I wasn't here, but my understanding is you based your award based on what Tim told you.
We did, we had to talk with Tim, and the sheriff was there, and the district attorney was there. And we all agreed that that was the best bid for, for everything that was, was brought forward. And they seemed professional, not that the others weren't professional.
But they've done this.
Which.
Well, and they warranted it, and.
Had them on. And they're gonna dedicate like four guys.
About the insurance, yeah, about if they drop something.
And they have no issue with taking apart what is not gonna be able to get through the door, that's part of it too?
That's what I thought they, that's what they had said.
Okay.
Let's see, we're down to, they're on the discussions.
Thank you.
So then there'll be a comment.
Okay, if there's no other comments on the courthouse, we'll, down to new business. Alex, do you have any new business?
No.
No. Steve, do you have any new business?
You know what, I, I, I don't.
Okay, Cindy, none, I don't either, commissioners' comment.
Uh, just, guys, we, it's been a, it's been a long night tonight, all this rain, getting calls all through the night, as far as these, there was an accident in our district in the country. Um, fire department had an issue getting out there, I mean, this is just, uh, you know, water moves a lot of things, and so, I'm, I'm sure that, well, maybe Max, they, they didn't get my train up in his area, I don't know.
No, we, we was out, but, we got a call from Sheriff's Office.
I just told, I just told, uh, Tony, I said, listen, I said, you know, people are gonna be calling, wanting this fixed, and this fixed, I said, there's not gonna be a whole lot of things you can do until this water goes down, so I said, do what you can. And if people wanna get upset because they can't get down the road, they wouldn't be able to get down anyway, they can contact me, so I just said, and everybody be safe, so, there's, there's, uh, it's just gonna take a little bit to recover out of this, so we're, we're just doing the same normal stuff as we do, so, that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, we had two point six inches over, in my area, we've got a lot of roads washed out underwater, we don't know what we have. I'm expecting tubes to be washed out, but we've got a lot of gravel off the roads.
There's a lot of them, they couldn't even get to it, and I said, don't try to get to it, cause they're really anxious.
Yeah, we're, we already know we're gonna have problems, so, uh, be safe, turn around, don't drown, uh, please, please be safe. Turn around, don't drown, so we're gonna do what we can, uh, that was over in the Salt Fork, LeMans area. Here in Medford, we had, uh, three tents, I think up on the state line, I, I think a tent, so it's, 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 um, but it definitely was like a flash flood, so it's, it's got a big deal. Um, I was gonna update you on our burrowing beetle, I know that's not in Grant County, but it got downlisted to, from endangered to threatened, so that should help our transportation here in Oklahoma to move forward, that is definitely good news for eastern Oklahoma. Um, this week I have, uh, all kinds of meetings, I'll be in Enid tomorrow, we have our community, community sentencing council meeting, I've got a NACO membership call, Wednesday I'll be in Tulsa at the Women in Transportation. Uh, Thursday we have a Wheat Heart Nutrition, um, meeting. Also, Robert is supposed to go get his surgery this week, if the insurance doesn't cancel that. So, we're hoping to get that done. We have all of our roads, uh, finished, sprayed to all the cemeteries, we are now spraying on our black tops and our gravel, obviously. Uh, won't be able to do much in the southern part of the county, but we will still continue working in the northern part. Um, just doing projects, got mowers ready to go, so we're getting geared up for mowing, doing that, some of that on weekends. Uh, in addition to our normal everyday work, so, that's what we've got going on. And next week, next Monday, I will not be here, I leave for my National Association of Counties meeting. And next week, next Monday, I will not be here, I leave for my National Association of Counties meeting, um, in Spokane, Washington, and I will be leaving Monday and coming home the following Sunday, so, I will not be here at the next meeting.
Max, if you would, let, give me a second, I, I did, uh, go down to Acco last week.
Okay.
And I had a sit-down meeting, which, we're unable to do the, the new commissioners' club forces because of the timing. But I did sit down with Dale, and I sat down with Randy, and had about a two-hour, just, uh, any questions I had, we had some issues, and it was very important, I really, I really enjoyed. They were supposed to come up today and see me, or Randy was, but I have a doctor's appointment today, so, I went and saw them last week, and it was awesome, we s- we took me down in the boardroom, we sat there, had a great discussion, I really, those guys are really dedicated to their work, and.
They don't screw you wrong, they're welcome information.
Yes, and I did, uh, I got a call with D, I got a call, D Q guy today, he went and inspected the quarry, make sure we had everything back the way it was, so I will discuss that with him today and see what he found or what we need to do, if anything, so, kind of a few things I left out there.
Okay.
I was out, I went with Grace Inmire from, uh, Frank Lucas's office, Representative Lucas, we went to, uh, one of them last Friday, and, uh, we was out for about three hours, did a tour, and that, and I know you've been there, Steve, but I was pretty impressed, that's the first tour I'd out to see of it, it was, it was really nice, they were doing some expansions and some stuff, yeah, that's a really good, uh.
Well, I was there, it wasn't enjoyable, but I mean, I was there.
Yeah.
But, no, yeah, that's pretty impressive place.
Yeah. It was good.
Awesome.
Pretty good.
Well, um, I guess y'all know that, uh, we had a truck, we turned a truck over three weeks ago, uh, the driver is recovering, doing a lot better, he's at home, um, doing good, uh, still gotta go, he's not ready to come back to work yet, but we hope that happens soon, you know. The adjuster was up to look at the truck, I haven't heard anything back from them, uh, the truck estimate was fifty-six thousand dollars to repair the truck. So, the adjuster come up and looked at the trailer and the truck, and hasn't got back with me yet, so, I don't know where we're at with that, what we're gonna do, for sure. But, I still owe some money on that truck, so I've gotta weigh them, what I'm gonna do, weigh the options out.
They don't wanna tell me what?
Uh, they haven't told me yet, whether they would or not. The fifty-six thousand dollars was an estimate from Brockner's, they said that the insurance is really picky, they wanted to get everything accounted for that they thought they would need, and that's what they done. The trailer, if we put a new tarp on it, uh, roller and stuff, I think the, the fenders we can live with and things, that wouldn't cost as much. The tractor's gonna be the way more expensive thing, but we'll see how that goes. We're, didn't get all that much rain, we're ready to go mowing and stuff, uh, we've been working around a shop, got the Packers and the CMI machine and the oil truck up to Manchester, and we was gonna start that this week. Well, guess what, it's wet, real wet. So, we're putting off our road stabilization for that mile, but we're trying that new treatment on, uh, we're gonna push that back. Last Friday, um, Commissioner from Alphafa County contacted me about chewing up some road for them over south of Burlington. Be four miles south of Burlington, going back west for four miles, that they wanna chew up with the CMI machine, we haven't got that, Jay Hague was the commissioner.
That's Peterson's road.
I know it is, and that's where a lot of pressure's coming from. He wants that road put into the C I R B plan, he called me, and I explained to Roland that that's a five-year plan and that we can't just introduce that.
Well, he, that, that district's already had their cert plan, and until all, everybody, all seventy-seven counties have their first project, you don't add, you, you don't get another, you don't do another one.
Steve hasn't even started his.
Yeah, he's got his yet, so, yeah, and they already did theirs, so, I did send, uh, Roland and Steve, uh, some information on, uh, the bill grant, and said, you know, I told, I talked to J, I talked to Jay on the phone, and I said, you know, I said, you have to have some match money on those bill grants, but I told him, maybe Noda could, you know, Noda did a grant for you for that tiger grant at one time, I said, maybe Noda could help him fill out that bill grant, I don't know. So, he's on that board instead, so he was gonna talk to me.
Yeah, he's on the Noda board.
Yeah, so.
Have you heard anything from, uh, Federal Highway?
No, I got a deal from Federal Highway today, but it isn't the grant, it, this is on a letter I wrote in support of another grant that O U, uh, ultimate, oh, O U, yes, I wrote a letter.
I cannot believe.
I did, I wrote a letter for support for O U for the University.
I thought that was surely a mess.
No, yeah, the University of Minnesota, collaboration with North, uh, Oklahoma, for a, uh, universal transportation sentencing program, so I did write it.
You actually wrote that?
I did, I actually.
That was probably hard for you to.
Wrote that out.
Hey, I'm proud of you, yes.
So, that's what that was, I've not heard on that other grant.
Okay, we need to decide whether we wanna send Scott Fulkenberg to the boiler class, which he's enrolled in, uh, that happens to be like May the sixteenth, right, when we're gonna be moving. And I told him, I said, well, it'd sure be nice if he was here, and he said he, we could reschedule his time to get certified.
Yeah, so what, do they offer that?
I don't know how often they'll.
Do we have a boiler?
Brandon, uh.
Hot water tanks.
Hot, hot water tank.
Yeah.
But Brandon's going to be.
So would they?
Brandon's gonna do that, and I thought I figured that would cover this.
Yeah, I think leave it with Brandon and then.
Okay.
Yeah, better probably leave Scott here.
That's what I.
And then later on, if after we get that done, maybe we can send him, if we need another guy, send him to.
Yeah.
Uh, the letter that we mailed off to, uh, Crosland's Communications, must have reached.
I did, uh, it touched a nerve, uh, Tim, Tim called me when I was talking about this phone, he said that the guy from Crosland's called him, and it went to their attorneys. The letter went to their attorneys.
Oh, it did.
And attorneys must've chewed this guy out, because he called Tim and he was upset, because why did you do that, and I told Tim, I said, you know what, he can be upset all he wants, if he would just come get that stuff done, we would never have to talk to him again.
That's exactly.
And that's the way, cause Tim said he was, he was pretty upset that we had done that, but been getting Mickey Mouse for a while now, and it's, and people go in there and rent that building, and they, and I said, you know, they see stains on your ceiling tiles and everything, and it doesn't, it doesn't look that great, and, so I guess it touched a nerve.
Yeah.
Somebody got a, got their rear end chewed, and.
Well, maybe, maybe I'll get it fixed.
That's what, that was the whole point of it, wasn't it? I mean, I'm sorry that the guy's upset, Tim, but I mean, and Tim says, hey, I agree, I mean, that's what we needed, so, yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, they had called me and told me that there was some of that stuff that their subs was responsible for, and the reasoning, and, and it was a runaround, the reasoning that we hadn't paid that last payment, that twenty-four thousand dollars, was these things wasn't done, and that's what I told them, well, that's the reason that they're using for not coming in and completing the thing.
They're paying, they're paying for.
They are now, at that time they are.
Yeah, that's right, now they're paying full, and they, and they're.
We paid a project manager, so if your subs aren't performing, that's on him to get it done, so.
That's right.
Sorry about your subs not wanting to do their stuff, but that's why we paid a project manager to do that, for that, make sure that was done, so now, it's just trying to get kicked down the road, you know, and, and, and I, I think it was great, I mean, we'll see. If he's really mad, he'll get those subs in here and get fixed.
Get it changed, but, uh, I haven't talked back to Phil after that, but this, uh, they talked like they were wanting to, uh, they were gonna get after that and address that, some of that stuff, so, I sure hope so.
Thought that was the whole point in it, really.
The other thing that has come out, uh, we are going to be okay this year, but they ask us for a budget for our nine-one-one. And we in the past have been turning in, cause which county turns in their budget, they go back to the nine-one-one people, and they submit the budget. Next year, we're gonna have to have our own budget submitted, even though we shift and, and put all of our money towards there, but what they're really after is, is, uh, we wanted them to, when Noda was involved, we wanted the money to come to us here, so we had a way to track it, which I still think is a good idea, we know how much money that we're investing. Next year, they're not gonna accept that, they want the money to go right to the place, to the nine-one-one center, which Noda's out of it now, it comes to us anyway.
I don't think we can do that legally, Max, I, it, it's our money, I don't think we can assign our, I, I guarantee, I, I don't know, but I will bet our D A will not sign off on us assigning our money, well, it, it all goes to them anyway. We, we just deposit it.
It's, it's not them that's the problem, it's the nine-one-one, the state nine-one-one deal is the problem, because the tax.
The state nine-one-one wants our money?
No, no.
They want us to give it directly to Woods County.
They want us to go directly to Woods County.
I don't think they have, they don't have the authority to tell us to do, if they want us to do that, they need to change the.
Well, I think that's what they're talking about, if they want us to do our own budget, to where it's better than sending them directly, is that what they're saying?
Well, we, we send them every penny we get, it comes to us, we deposit it, and we turn around as soon as we get it, like today, we got that money, it was, I don't remember what it was, but, well, next week, Cindy Sue will have a purchase order, and we'll send and attach that copy of that to it, and we'll, we'll send it to them.
Yeah, they're trying to make somebody's life easier somehow, so.
But for good accounting, that needs, that's what needs to continue.
That's our money, we have to receipt it.
Yeah, we have no way of tracking it if it didn't come to you.
Well, it's our income, I don't, how are they gonna endorse it? It's gonna be made out to Grant County, how are they gonna endorse it?
That's the same deal as when we get the Oklahoma Tax Commission money for it, I mean, it comes out as twenty-seven grant slash Woods County nine-one-one, that's how it is, from O T C right now. So they wouldn't have to request or ask our permission at all. When we get our money from O T C, they could automatically send it to Woods County.
So we could just have that sent, but we would still have a way to track it, correct?
Yes, 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 if they're gonna continue to, you know, post those, and it should be public records, so.
That, that is what this letter that they got, and they, we, I got contacted, I was supposed to fill out a budget, so I went over there to nine-one-one, and I talked to them about the budget. We did it just like we'd done, and filled in Grant County's names instead of Woods County's names, and, and put in the figures, and we turned it in, only she turned it in on our behalf, okay? They are not gonna accept that next year, they want us to have our own budget, which we do have a budget, that's what I was telling her, and she actually understands that, what we're doing, and, and how we're doing it. They are telling her that we have to have that on our own, turn in a budget.
Excise board sign off on it, rather than it going through in Woods County's excise board signing off on it.
You don't have budget on cash accounts. It's like highway, we don't have a, we don't sit down here and take our money and say, okay, we're gonna put fifty thousand on bridges and twenty-five thousand dollars for tubes, and, you know, we don't, we, it, it's a cash account. You, because you don't know for a month and month what you're gonna get.
But we do sign a contract with the nine-one-one in Woods County to send them.
Well, to send it to.
Right, so all they would need to know is the budget that we've been getting from O T C.
Right, whatever our average budget that we have, I guess you just go back and look at the year past.
Okay, if you make the budget for, let's say we make a budget for.
And it comes in over?
For, yeah, then do we keep that, or once it comes in under, then we have to?
Our contract says that we send them all of our money.
And it doesn't have a listing, does it? It doesn't have an amount.
Have it listed.
All of our monthly.
Well, the budget's kinda pointless, so.
Well, we got by with it this year.
Well, let's send them a budget for ten thousand bucks and be done.
Makes you wonder what their motivation is.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what's behind it?
Yeah.
I mean, why? I'm sure.
And this is the state nine-one-one, we're.
No, it's, it's, it's actually, uh, the auditor's office.
What?
It's their auditing office.
If his auditing office, Woods County?
Woods County.
Woods County, so that's what you're talking about, not the state auditor.
What they're wanting to do is, is, is they have, we have to show them what our budget is at the state office. They can't list them under Woods County no more, they won't let us buy with that.
Okay, well, I just suggest we take whatever our cash was last year and give them fifty percent of it and turn that budget in, because that, and then, our, but we can pay them, but still, with the idea that you're gonna pay them all of it, but, you know. But just if they want a number, if he want a number.
They don't wanna inflate their budget.
No, exactly, you don't wanna inflate their budgets.
It's a pointless process, really.
But if it makes them happy, but if it makes them happy, give me fifty percent, and then they can plug that number in.
Well, I told Ashley, I can't see any advantage to us or them, why it would make any difference on what you, what you're, how you're doing that, she couldn't either. So, between now and next year, we, we may have to change how our money comes to us, or whether it comes to us or goes to them.
I, I will not.
I would like to know a little bit more of what the motivation is behind this, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure.
Well, we're sending them, why could we not establish our own E nine-one-one?
Yeah.
Why could we not?
Because we wouldn't be able to run it for a week.
You wouldn't be able to afford to run it.
Wouldn't be able to afford to run it, uh-uh.
I'll guarantee you.
Oh, yeah.
We're in a good deal right now.
Yeah, everybody, Woods County is.
Alphafa County's gonna, yeah, gonna join it too, so, I don't say.
I'm surprised they haven't already.
But you can't, you can't keep the people manned and the equipment, uh, for what it costs us.
So that's still a blessing and everything that they're there, I'm with all that, but still, it makes me wonder why they're wanting to do this, why, you know, their auditors tell them they need to, I mean.
Well, I don't see any.
Well, maybe they're losing money on this.
Yeah, hey, you know what, they could be.
Maybe they are.
That's what I'm wondering about, I mean, before we just go and, before we go and say, this is what we should do, I mean, we should find out.
Get back on.
Why.
What's their expenditures?
Yeah.
That's all my comments, I'm just telling you that next year, we're gonna have to do something different.
I'm staying.
Okay, item ten.
Now.
Do you want me to give you a motion on item ten?
No, not yet, I'm not, I'm talking.
I thought you just said that you just got all you had.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean it that way, I just. That's enough on that situation.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay, let's just go ahead and adjourn on.
I'm done.
I'll maybe adjourn.
I'll second that.
And we can say that we adjourned all third.
Yes.
Aight.
Bob and.
Denson. Aight.
Twelve oh nine.
Oh, yes, okay.
Coming when it's gonna be.
We're still.